And I just wanted to make a, give a point of privilege right now, just to express my appreciation to our teachers and staff and administrators because last Tuesday night, pretty much they had left and gone home for the day and found out when they went to school the next morning, it was going to be a completely different environment. And so for the umpteenth time this year, they pivoted at a moment's notice. And that, that is an incredibly hard lift for anyone. But when you walk in and to a classroom filled with students and you're supposed to be on and be completely in control of the situation and to really be walking into something that you didn't know was going to occur, I just, I'm so proud and appreciative of our teachers and our administrators and our staff for, for making that happen on Wednesday morning. There were some hiccups, but they really, I mean, I think Dr. Little and the principals met Tuesday night at about eight o'clock to figure out what was going to happen on Wednesday morning. And it, you know, in some schools, at 6:30 the next morning, students were walking in the doors. And so I'm incredibly impressed with the work that they did. Again, this, this year has been, you know, we teach our kids resiliency. And I think in our minds, resiliency is we've got this big hurdle to cross. And then once we get across that hurdle, the ground is smooth. And this year, it has, every day has been resiliency again. You get up and it's another, and not just for the adults, for the students, for the families, for the board, for the administration, that, you know, you get up the next morning and you face what that day has. And then you think you've conquered it and you get up the next day and there's something else that you have to face. And I've just, you know, we've got 15 days of school left. And I know that there's going to be more opportunities for us to show resiliency as a community and as a, you know, as a, a group that has the best interest of children at the forefront all the time. But I just really wanted to just take a moment to say how much I appreciate what everybody, from Dr. Little down to our teachers, our principals, our bus drivers, our, you know, custodians, housekeepers, because anytime we implement even just a little change, it affects, it affects all of them. And I'm just very proud of what they have done over and over and over and over again this, this school year. Thank you very much for letting me to, let me have that moment. All right. We are now moving on to 9.0, the second reading of the 2021-2022 General Fund Operating Budget with Mr. Salters.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Just wanted to review this evening, the second reading of the General Fund Budget. As, as we've talked a lot about the budget for this year already, we will continue to have conversations over the next month and come back together for what we anticipate will be a final budget hearing on June 22nd. That's our normal board meeting next month. And that'll be the third reading. Of course, we, we will continue to monitor closely what the legislature's doing and how that affects our budget. Just to remind everyone, the General Fund Budget is the operating budget of the district and it lays out the revenues and expenses related to the day-to-day operations of, of the school district. And a couple of months ago now, we reviewed with you again, the, the district mission and system commitments that are tied to our strategic plan. Obviously, a budget should reflect your strategic plan and the goals and, and objectives of that plan. And so you can see our system commitments highlighted here. Priorities for the budget that, that came out of our discussions. Obviously, for, for next year, we're looking to reduce or maintain student-teacher ratios. We're giving a step increase to our staff and then implementing a number of employee retention and recruitment strategies as we move through the year. Some additional priorities that we're looking at, ongoing support for our Lula program. You heard that mentioned earlier. That's our online learning academy. Expanding the Lexington District One College Center that's currently located at Gilbert High School. And then we're planning for the relocation of Lexington Middle School to its replacement facility and also beginning the planning for opening a Gilbert and Pelean Early Childhood Centers at repurposed facilities there. So we have a number of factors as we talk about second reading that are, that are influencing some of the changes that you'll see. The, the proposed budget in first reading was based on the appropriations bill by the House Ways and Means Committee. And then we've had increases in FY 2021, projected state surplus, and then in FY 2122 revenue forecast. Those were released by the Board of Economic Advisers on April 8th. They actually meet this Thursday again. And so we'll anticipate some changes to, you know, their, their forecasts and, and we'll react accordingly to those. The increases that the BEA projected were incorporated into the Senate Appropriations Bill that was passed on April 29th. And so we've incorporated those changes from our first reading budget into the second reading, and those are again, based on that Senate Appropriations Bill. Highlight for you some of the changes from first to second reading. As part of the Senate Appropriations Bill, they called for a $1,000 salary increase for each cell on the teacher salary schedule. And so we're recommending that salary increase for consistency across our employees to be implemented across all of our salaried schedules. And so those are employees who are receiving a yearly or an annual salary would, would, all of those schedules would go up by $1,000 each of those cells. We've provided you guys a copy of those for your review. We took a little bit different approach with support staff because the support staff, it's an hourly pay. And so I, I highlighted an example because I wanted to point out to you that the, the approach that's taken actually is a, is a better approach for the support staff than, than what the salaried employee would see. So the minimum full-time support staff we would, we employ, when this could possibly be a housekeeper, maybe a bus driver, would work six hours a day for 180 days. If you do, do the math on that, that would come out to a $1,080 increase. And so that's the minimum increase that a, that a support staff employee would see. And so, you know, if they're an eight-hour employee and they work 230 days, you know, they, they would do the math on that and it would, it would be slightly higher. So our support staff are actually receiving a little, little more benefit overall.
Mr. Salters, just, just a quick question. The salary schedules you provided, does that include the $1,000 step as part of line one? Or is that without?
Yes, sir. Those that you have tonight are the new schedules with the $1,000. Yes, sir.
Thank you for clarifying.
Yes, sir. And it also includes the dollar per hour that you're saying.
Okay, yes, sir. Thank you.
The Senate version of the Appropriations Bill also included a 5% salary increase for bus drivers. And so we're looking at, we incorporated that, so they receive a 5% salary increase. And then if you recall in first reading, we had included an extra dollar per hour for the bus driver, so they would get that on top of the 5% salary increase. And then there are some increases in health insurance premiums. The Senate added a, a well visit for employees into the health insurance premium. And this is a, a much welcomed thing if you're a state employee for many years. This has not been part of the insurance plan and it's very expensive to go get an annual physical. And so we hope, hope this will incentivize folks to do that and that this, this will remain in the budget.
From, from a healthcare perspective.
Yes, sir.
You cannot put enough weight on this, okay? So, so thank you for addressing that. As a healthcare provider, to which Dr. Powers will also attest, I'm sure we would rather head off a problem before we actually make it to a problem. And I've never understood why insurance companies are, are slow to pick that up. And, and so the, the attention that needs to be paid to wellness is, it's much needed. So thank you for that.
Thank you for those comments. It, it is very, very important component of the, the Senate version, so we're, we're pleased to see that in there. One thing you'll see in an adjustment in revenue is we, we have decreased our projected investment income by $130,000. And that's based on just continued decline in rates of return with the market as it is at this point. Obviously, we have very limited investment options, being a government entity. And so, but, but even still, we, we are seeing those rates of return decline. So we, we think it's prudent to go ahead and lower that revenue estimate. And then the increases in the revenues that you'll see later on are due to the increases in the Senate version of the Appropriations Bill related to the salaries and these other adjustments that we've talked about.
Mr. Salters, excellent. Those first four bullet points, I thought the first reading was great. This makes it even better. I mean, this is, this is exciting and this is like really kind of a groundbreaking budget for us.
Well, and, and of course, we, we really wanted to focus, as you recall, one of our priorities and, and as we talked with the board early on in the development of the budget, we heard a lot of feedback around recruitment and retention. And that was some conversation that we had. You see a list here, we've been able to expand that list with some of the things that are in the Senate version. The step increase, the $1,000 per salary employee, the bus driver 5% plus the dollar, support staff increase, a dollar per hour. And then our, recall in first reading, we, we've continued with this, the increase in the years of experienced steps on all of our salary schedules, taking them out to 40 years. This allows for some of our more experienced staff to continue to, to grow on the salary schedule. And, and we, we hope to retain those folks. Previously, when they got to the top of a schedule, there was no, no additional movement in some cases. So we really wanted to, to hopefully incentivize them to, to continue that movement. We modified all of our salary schedules again to provide some retention incentive as well so that every five years, we're providing additional pay at the step that is above that. So when you hit step five, for example, you will receive step six pay and you do that for two years. And then when you hit step 10 again, you'll receive step 11 pay and you do that for two years. So we're hoping to do some things to keep staff around for, you know, just a little bit longer. If they, if they're close to that next year, they may hang, hang on for another year or two to, to receive that additional pay. Another thing that we, we talked a lot about was our, our new teachers and onboarding them from college. And so one of the things that we did a few years ago, when Dr. Little came, was a drive to 35 and we reached that goal. And so this is another strategy that we're employing where we're taking basically the, the first three years of a teacher's pay and we're paying them at step two. So it's zero, one, and two, they get paid at step two for those first three years. And then after that, you know, they'll move on to step three and so forth. This lines up exactly with their continuing contract. So when they come to us, they're an induction teacher and they go through their, their processes. And then when they become a continuing teacher, they will, you know, continue to move on up the salary schedule. So again, we're trying to put some additional money in the hands of those starting teachers. Some, some districts are doing things like bonuses and things like that. But we, we feel like this is a steadier approach, if you will, for, for the teachers. We're aligning our, our salary schedules for nurses, social workers, occupational, physical therapists, career specialists, board-certified behavior analysts to their educational degrees like we have with our teaching staff. So if you have a bachelor's degree, then you fall on this schedule. If you have a master's degree, you fall on, on this schedule and so forth. Additionally, we're increasing our substitute pay. And so these, you know, these items down here are continued from first reading, no changes to those that we see. Some additional ongoing recruitment strategies that we, we're maintaining in the budget, we're funding our national board stipend at $3,000. And, you know, regardless of whether a teacher receives a state-funded stipend, currently we're paying 275 national board supplements. Obviously, we provide a lot of graduate-level coursework and, and text associated with that coursework for free to our teachers, variety of professional development opportunities and some other, you know, opportunities for them to earn additional pay and supplements related to additional duties they may be able to pick up at the schools. And so looking at our enrollment, this is something that we are following very closely. There are a number of factors impacting enrollment right now. Probably the, the most primary factor is the real estate market. We've talked some about that. There's interesting things going on in the real estate market. Houses are being sold, you know, literally overnight before they actually ever hit the MLS and, and, you know, ending up with multiple offers and, you know, all kinds of competition right now. And our builders, due to what's going on with the building material supplies locally have, a lot of them have stopped building and developed kind of allotments that they release a certain number of new homes every couple of weeks. And you have to kind of get in line to, to do that. It's not where you can just drive in a neighborhood and say, hey, I want to build a house on this lot. You get up to the model home and sign a contract. It, it doesn't work that way right now. So it's very difficult to get into the, to the area. And so, you know, we're projecting a 515 student enrollment. You know, we'll see how that, how that shakes out as, as we go forward. As you, as you see last year with, with all the things that happened with COVID response, we had a number of, you know, students that either relocated or pulled out of the schools and, and chose another option. And so we, we anticipate that bouncing back as, as we go forward.
Mr. Salters, I was just going to mention, I'm on the Board of the Directors for the, for Schizbit, the South Carolina School Board Insurance Trust. And I went to their, our board meeting week before last. And the reinsurer from which Schizbit buys their insurance was there talking about market conditions and a bunch of different things. But one of the big unknowns for all school districts for next year is enrollment. And, and that affects insurance premiums since, as well. And I mean, there was a lengthy discussion about the fluctuations in enrollment and students starting to come back and then additional students leaving. And it's just, there's this huge question mark over what the first day of school is going to look like in August. Really, we might not know until the first day of school or we might not know until after Labor Day, really, you know, start getting a clearer picture on what our enrollment is. So I know y'all have really good science behind these numbers, but I think that there's, it's really just completely unknown at this point in time.
Well, historically, we've, we've been pretty consistent. And I think if you go back 20, 25 years, we've averaged a growth of about 500 students a year. And so, but there are ups, up and down years and certainly this will be, be one of those years. It's going to be interesting to see what, what ultimately shakes out.
But from a budget perspective, we always have certified positions open. And so again, we can right-size. So I think we, we plan. Again, that's, it's like everything else, including COVID. You make plans based upon what you know today and you adjust as you learn more.
Well, and one of the things that, that I'll, I'll point out, and we've had a lot of conversation about this, and it's actually the next slide, is our targeted staffing ratios. And so we are staffing at this 26, 861, okay? And so if all of those students don't show up, that makes this slide look better. And so we, we, you know, we are proposing in this budget, and these ratios haven't changed from first to second reading. But you can see the, the trend that, that we have, you know, five-year-old kindergarten, we've gone from 23 to 21, first grade, 23 to 21, second, 23 to 21, third, we're staying at 23. It was reduced from 25 to 23 a few years back. Fourth and fifth grade, going from 26 to 23. And then our middle and high schools are, are staffed based on a formula where a, a number of positions are calculated in that formula and you come out with a target ratio of 23 to one and 18 to one. And then the, the principals allocate those teachers out based on schedule requests and the delivery of different curriculum that they're, and programs that they're implementing at their, at their high schools. And so, you know, I, I just emphasize that these are target numbers. And so, you know, day one next fall, you may walk into a classroom and you may see 18 students in a, in a first grade class. You may see 22 students in the next first grade class. And that, that really happens because it's, they don't come in nice, pretty 21-person or 21-child packages. We get different varieties of, of enrollment numbers and, and so, you know, these will be what we will target and, and hope to maintain. And certainly, as I mentioned, if the enrollment doesn't increase to that level, these will certainly improve or at least be, be hit pretty easily.
And I wanted to mention, we received a very, the board received a very thoughtful email from a seventh grader this past week about class sizes and talking about how it was nice when we were in hybrid in particular, about how much they felt like their learning opportunity was better because the class was smaller, they got more individual attention, it was easier to interact with their peers. And so I think that that supports anything we can do to keep our class sizes low. You know, hearing it from a student, and it was, it was, it was a very thoughtful letter. And so I think, I, I appreciate that this is our, our focus in this budget.
All right, we're going to take a look at our expenditure summary. And so this, this chart shows you the net positions that would change from the base, you know, payroll budget from, from this past year. And so again, working on these, these ratios, we're adding 25.5 FTE at the elementary level. You'll see some changes on the next few slides. We've actually tightened up our Lula numbers. We've gotten some actual registrations back. And we anticipate, you know, roughly 309 students in Lula. Initially, it was going to be somewhere around 700, so they were interested. We actually had about, we had 309 commitments, 132 at middle and 177 at, at the high school level. And so what we've done is in, in first reading, we had 37 FTE allocated to Lula. And so we've taken five of those FTE, I say we, our HR team has taken those, five of those FTE, placed them back at the middle school level. And then 12 high school FTE and placed them back at our high schools. Because the students, you know, that indicated initially they may be interested in Lula are, are also going back to the face-to-face environment. So we'll need those teachers back to, to cover those, those students. And so that took the, the, these, you know, the FT at the middle school, it brought it down to 4.8 positions that are, that are lost there and then increased the high school to 24. We have a interesting kind of anomaly with our enrollment right now is we have this big bubble flowing up through our high school. And so it's kind of vacating our middle school and it's flowing up through the high school. And you, when we have that happen from time to time, you have a large class or two that kind of fluct, you know, moves right on up through the system. And so that's happening. Our special needs FTE, it has not changed from first to second reading. And we still have the three and a half pool positions that we're maintaining. And those would be, you know, again, positions that are allocated out there in the budget to address specific needs as we come up in the fall. And, you know, we, we need a special ed teacher that we weren't, weren't planning on because of some students moved in or something like that.
My apologies. I, I, I know we have spoken about this one time before, but, but I don't recall the determination. So if a student go is, goes on medical homebound, and this is probably a student services or, or academic question, student goes on, on medical homebound for an indefinite period of time, would they then enroll into a Lula-type situation? Or would they stay with some sort of, of, I guess, homebound teacher? What would, in, in the midst of a new, yeah, where do they count? So in the midst of a new Lula environment like this, is there consideration for, for possibly transitioning them to that?
Right now, Dr. Guyton, with COVID, our medically fragile homebound students, they are instructed online. We have a dedicated teacher to do that. Is that your question?
Well, I guess now that we have Lula and if we have, say, 309 students who have enrolled, I can tell you within my office, I will probably see anywhere from 10 to 20 kids a year who at some point will go on a medical homebound for, for various reasons. But if, if we have the environment and we're getting better and better and better at it from a Lula perspective, could they then roll into, to the Lula environment during that medical homebound?
Well, I think that's why Mr. Salters mentioned that we would have a Lula teacher for special ed. So the answer is yes.
Okay.
If, if all the, if all the stars lined up, that would work for that child. We would certainly make that happen.
I guess I just think about it from a staffing issue. I don't know what that number looks like every year for, for the number of students who go flow in and out of medical homebound. But I, I could see that number probably being a triple-digit number potentially. And so that may influx though, that may influence those Lula numbers.
As a district, we could be more efficient. Because again, if their home school's Lake Murray Elementary and they go out for a three month extended, we assign a teacher that's a homebound teacher that facilitates their learning. Well, now they can step into the Lula program.
That's correct.
And therefore, those FTEs, those homebound teachers, we can redeploy for other more efficient uses, I think is where you're going.
Yeah, yeah.
I would like to add to that, if I may. It, it may not always be a seamless transition.
Sure.
Based on course offerings versus course requests and that sort of thing. But it would potentially give us an opportunity to provide more instruction on homebound than we currently provide.
Right. It basically just gives us another tool in our belt.
That's exactly right.
Thank you.
All right. So next we'll take a look at the administrative and support changes. And again, these are net additions and, and cuts. And the, the salary or the dollar amounts included in here are full benefits related. So it's, it's the cost of retirement and everything associated with the positions. We have three instructional support staff positions and those are 5K assistants. We have the one non-instructional support staff position and that's at Beachwood Middle School. Their enrollment has gone over the formula that we, we use to staff their, their front office area. And so they're getting an additional position there. The three instructional special needs, again, are special needs IAs related to classes there. You'll, you'll see a difference here on first reading, the school administrator was allocated to the Lula program. And so because of the redistribution of students who said they may have been interested in Lula and now are not, we no longer need the administrator in the Lula program. That's going to be served by our administrative staff at our Alternative Education Services. And the Gilbert Middle School enrollment has gone over the 800-student threshold for the additional assistant principal. And so we're taking that FTE and shifting it over to Gilbert Middle School. Central Services Administrative Staff, this is a position, the Chief Technology Officer, Chief Technology Innovation Officer, excuse me, that was discussed earlier. And then there, there's a position that we are including in this presentation, really for information only. This is not included in the overall total, but this is a supervisor nursing. And the reason it's not included in the total is because this position would be paid for through Medicaid reimbursement. Medicaid has changed their billing practices and a registered nurse with that RN designation has to sign off on all of the billing that is conducted. And it's become a tremendous burden on our, our school nurses. And so we are, we basically have the idea here that we will create this centralized position to do that billing and the position will pay for itself through the Medicaid reimbursement. So really, this is just as an information that, for consideration of adding that, that position to handle that. And then moving on to our salaries and, and related costs associated with, you know, fringe benefits and so forth, just, this is just a summary of the costs associated with the Just, this is just a summary of the costs associated with the different, you know, items that we talked about earlier. And you can see those costs, the step increase for our all-eligible employees, the three point six nine million. The thousand-dollar increase is approximately three million dollars, the dollar per hour for support staff is approximately one point eight. Dollar per hour for bus drivers, you see that, three fifty-four. Five percent is two sixty-two. The increase in substitute pay is two thirty-five. Additionally, this HR, HR generalist was included in the previous budget under a different, under a line item below this, uh, supplements temporary salaries. And so we broke that out because what this is, is, and Mr. Stacy, I don't know if you want to weigh in on this, but basically, our human resource team is, is transitioning their, their structure of how they serve our, our staff and creating more of a generalist position. So you have in benefits, you don't just meet with a benefits person who talks about, you know, your medical benefits and then to meet with a retirement person and then meet with a, you know, person who, you know, may do with your long-term leave or whatever. You, you structure it so that you have one person, one point of contact in HR. So when I'm onboarded, hired, I have the same person serving my, my HR needs, you know, for the life of my employment. So I don't know if, Mr. Stacy, you need to add to that, I don't know, I tried to capture it.
I think you did a pretty good job.
Okay, thank you. So again, this is not new money, it's, it, from first to second reading, we just pulled it out to show it as a, as a separate item there for you. The next line item, the supplements, temporary salaries and other adjustments. We included at your place a document that, it's got green and yellow and it looks like this. It has a breakdown of, of what those, those totals are and what it looked like from first to second reading. Just, just for your information, it is obviously a negative number from the reductions that we're taking in, in the budget. Then we're including the state mandated employer retirement and health insurance increases. There was a slight increase in that number from first to second reading to, to capture those health insurance increases and premiums. And then we have a funding shortage, we, we get funds for, from the state for reading coaches, nurses and career specialists. And those funds are being cut and so we're having to cover that, pick that, those costs up through our, through our general fund. I told you last month that we would, we'd include a slide on the substitute pay and we had provided, I think, a document for you, but here's a breakdown of what we're looking at with our substitutes. And you can see currently, you know, where they are, our teaching substitutes fall up in this category here. A certified teacher, if it's, the sub is certified, they would make eighty dollars a day. We're proposing to bring that to a hundred dollars a day. And then, you know, going on down, you have some other subs, nurse substitutes, instructional assistants, custodian food service. And so we're, you can see where they are currently and then where we're proposing to move them and then the associated increase. Substitutes have been a challenge to, to secure for our schools this year. And along with some other positions that, that, you know, we're having some difficulty finding staff for. And so we haven't changed these pay rates in a number of years. And we feel we need to be competitive with the market. And so that's, that's one of the things, I think, Ms. Garris, I believe you brought that up in, in one of our early priority meetings. And so that's, that's something we've, we've looked at and appreciate the input on that. And then increases in programs and services, so this is what we call our AP or Accounts Payable side. We, we had some increases that are listed out here. And I've provided a document for you, I think, actually, it was an email to you earlier this week with your, with your packet, that has a summary of each of these different, different items and how they're, they're associated. And I would just, just point out to you as a, as a point of information, you know, we, we have a contract or several contracts that are in here. Some are for survey tools, some are for software, we have the ground maintenance contracts, some other things. Any contract that the district enters into is an annual contract that is renewable for the, whatever terms are associated with it. We, we have a non-appropriations clause in every contract and so therefore that makes it by default an annual contract. And that's so that if a budget line item is cut, you know, at the board's direction and the funds are not allocated, then the district is not obligated to the contract. So I just, just point that out, every contract we have is essentially an annual contract because of how they're structured. So one point five million dollars of increases there, there have been no changes to this slide from first reading to second reading. And then we had some decreases in programs and services. Again, I'll just point out no changes to this slide, I, I will highlight a few large savings that we've achieved this, this year. We negotiated a significant premium decrease with our workers' compensation insurance to the tune of seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. We additionally negotiated property and casualty insurance decrease. And so about two hundred fifty thousand dollars, almost a million dollars, premium savings there. And then we had some other areas where some things were, were decreased. You know, see the note there about the mental health counselors, that hundred thousand dollars. We pay twenty thousand dollars per counselor with a partnership with Department of Mental Health. And so those were transferred to SRTI funding as they, they qualified for those funds. And then looking at our overall operating expenditures, you know, the proposed budget, this slide has, the expenditures have gone up, obviously because of the additional payroll associated costs from, you know, first reading to second reading. The increase is five million, four hundred sixty-two thousand, seven hundred eighty-five dollars. And I just point out a few things on, on this slide. There, there's no change to the programs and services overall increase, that three thirty-eight stays the same. And, you know, we, we are using or continuing to use a strategy that we implemented this year for the first time. And that was budgeting our payroll expenditures at less than one hundred percent. This current year's budget, we budgeted at ninety-eight percent. It looks like that, I mean, we have a number of payrolls left to run, obviously to get through the end of the year and still we're moving and shaking with staffing and resignations and different things. But it looks like we're going to hit about a ninety-five percent payroll fill rate this year. And so over the last seven years, we've been an average of ninety-six point four three percent fill rate. And so we're, we're taking this budget, this coming year, we're recommending using ninety-seven percent as the target for that fill rate. And so, you know, given the, I think that's, it's very market-driven and environmental. And so given the conditions that we're living in with the market the way it is and the availability of teaching resources, frankly, it's, and other staff that, that we're working with, it, you know, we feel comfortable with that ninety-seven percent. Obviously, every percentage point that you lower it by equates to essentially a two point six million dollar savings, if you will, in, in the budget. So that's something that we will track very closely. And, and it's, again, something we implemented this year and I think it's been proven, at least so far, to be very successful.
I would just be very cautious going below ninety-seven and again, if ninety-six point eight is our historical rate, we've fallen below because of all the teachers that have left the profession. And my guess is that once COVID goes through, there's going to be a surge, our fill rate's going to be higher. So we're probably okay for this next budget year, but the next one, we may.
May have to dip back up.
Yeah, and it's hard to switch the millage and all that quickly, so I'd be cautious there.
Right, and so we, we, I agree with you, we were watching this very closely and as I mentioned, I think it's very environmentally driven. I mean, it's condition-specific, you don't really have to watch what's going on. And so, you know, we'll, we'll monitor it this year and we may, you know, miss it slightly one way or the other. What we are trying to avoid is, you know, if you budget at a hundred percent, you know, in a budget with a twenty-six, two hundred sixty-eight million dollar payroll, you budget at a hundred percent, you know, as I mentioned, you know, you could be throwing another five point two or really even seven or more million dollars in a budget that, that you're not going to spend. So it's a, it's a, it's a way to be as conservative as possible with that budget and avoid undue millage burden on, on our business.
But the district doesn't lose that money because part of our budget comes from fund balance and so we just don't tap into the fund balance to fund the budget. So again, it's, it's, we don't lose the money.
Right.
And, and to me, I'm just picturing the, the, the point on the graph where our fill rate has dipped so that then our class sizes start going up. I mean, there, because the fill rate means we don't have teachers to fill the spots that we need to keep our class sizes. So it's good that the fill rate, that it's saving us budget dollars, but it also is a little scary to me if that keeps sliding, that then we're not, we're not keeping up ground and keeping teachers in our classrooms.
Right, well, and I would, I would point out, that's, that's very true. I would also point out that there are a number of other positions in the school system. We have, you know, close to four thousand positions and we have, you know, just over two thousand teachers, so you've got a number of support staff. And frankly, you know, our housekeeping staff right now, it's, it's very difficult to get housekeepers. And so other things play into that that also have a direct impact on, you know, the, the educational experience of our students. So it, you know, it is something we'll, we'll monitor closely. Just, you know, kind of this chart really kind of highlights, you know, our, our mission and what we're here for. We employ, as I mentioned, almost four thousand employees and, and so, you know, we're a large system and, and to serve the needs of, you know, twenty-six thousand plus students, it, it takes that many teachers and staff. And you see where the money goes, it's, it's salaries and related costs, it's not in, you know, utilities, maintenance, programs and services, those are minor pieces of the overall budget. So we, we put our money in our most valuable resource, which is our, our employees, teachers in the classroom and our, our staff supporting those teachers on a daily basis. Taking a quick look at our revenue, I know this chart's very busy. But really what you can take away from this chart primarily is this is the base student cost. The blue line is kind of where we should be funded and the green line is where we are anticipate, and at least here, anticipated to be funded or where we were funded. And, and there's a big gap there. And so that's, that leaves us to make that gap up every year. This year, we're looking at the Senate version, base student cost calculation is about twenty, two thousand five hundred sixteen dollars per student. So it's up from the original, I think the House version was around twenty-five hundred dollars, so hopefully it'll stay at that, that higher level. Dr. Powers asked the last meeting about fund balance and so we probably giving you more information than you want here, but it's a good, good summary of the history of our fund balance over the, you know, the last really eleven years, or ten, ten years or so, I guess. Right, right now, beginning of this past year, we, we had a fund balance of sixty-five point nine million. You recall that we, we did a few things throughout the course of the year with the, the surplus that we brought forward from last year that was included in that sixty-five point nine. So the eight point six million that we used to pay the one-time payment for employees, that was about six point six. And then, and then the step increase for all eligible employees that was brought on by the legislature, you know, a few months ago, comes out of that. So we'll have a look again at this, you know, in a, in a, in a few months as we close out this fiscal year. Excuse me, it's a little too early still because of all the payrolls and things we have left to, to process, to, to really project a, an ending fund balance for this, this year. We, we do anticipate having, you know, a small surplus. We don't anticipate it being the eight million. But, you know, it'll, you know, we, we do anticipate a, a small surplus, at least at this point. So we'll monitor that closely, but that's, that gives you kind of a layout of, of where we, where we are.
And what's the target on assigned fund balances a percent of budget for our rating agencies they'd like to see?
They really want to see, you know, a kind of an industry standard is really around sixteen percent at a minimum. At a minimum, and so that healthy fund balance generates you a, a much higher bond rating, which generates you a very attractive bonds to sell. Obviously, in the past few years, we've sold a number of bonds and we still have some to sell. You recall, we've generated as a result of that great credit rating, which, by the way, you know, these are independent national credit rating agencies, Standard and Poor's, Moody's, that are, you know, do all Fortune five hundred companies and so forth, they come in and they look at our books. They uncover all of our books and look at our CAFERS and everything involved in all of our financial reporting. And they establish those credit ratings. And as a result of, of our efforts and, and and how you, the board, operate and how, you know, the finance team and our schools operate and expend our budgets, we've been able to, through our most previous, recent bond sales, generate twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-two million dollars worth of bond premium, which is money that is, you know, sent to the district that we weren't planning on out of that three hundred and sixty-five million dollar bond referendum. Essentially, it means that we have that additional money on top to use towards, towards projects related to that referendum. And that's all because of the, the bond ratings that we have. So this, this fund balance, if they see a trend where you start to dip significantly, it's, that would be alarming to them. We had, you know, a credit call a few months ago. They're very curious about how districts are operating right now with COVID and what this looks like post-COVID and how, how that rating has changed in our balances. And so we've, we've been able to, you know, be pretty steady with that and got really positive feedback.
And if we hadn't had the attrition of teachers and the staff turnover that we saw because of COVID, that, that percentage would be lower because we would have had more salaries.
That's right.
I mean, you can't predict the future.
That's right. Taking a look quickly at our, our projected revenues, these, we, you know, are based on the Senate version as we indicated. You see a small decrease in local sources. That's the hundred and thirty thousand dollars in our, our, our investment income that we, that we reduced. You see the increases in state sources and transfers. The state pays, the state EIA pays through one fund and the money is transferred, every district does it this way, it's transferred into another fund and that's why it shows up like that and that transfers from other funds, that's the teacher salaries generally that, that come through. And so there's some increases there and then increases in, in the main state revenue sources as well. We are showing at this point an operational balance usage of seven point four, which is up, I think, from the little over five million in, in the, in the first reading to cover some of that. But again, I would, I would reiterate to you that we anticipate some surplus at the end of this year and so we would not anticipate actually having, whoops, I'm sorry, having to, to draw that whole amount down or, or take that big of a hit on, on our overall fund balance. And so these, you know, these lines will change potentially if the House and the Senate come together in, in late June and conference and decide what, you know, you know, what they want to keep in. We'll have to adjust our revenues accordingly associated to that.
Mr. Salters, can you give a timeline about what that looks like? I think there's some real, there's some, you know, once upon a time, somebody talked about fuzzy math. There's a little fuzzy math about when they're coming back together.
Sure.
If you could walk through that just a little bit for us.
So they're planning to come back together right now, June eighth through the tenth. And then the following week, which are twenty-first to the twenty-third. And then the twenty-ninth and thirtieth, I think are the dates on the calendar that they're, they're planning to come back. Obviously, the budget is a priority to take up during that time. But it may be that they don't conference and land on a budget until, you know, the twenty-ninth. And so we're, we're kind of at their mercy with some of this stuff. And so we, we, by our board policy, your, your board policy, our board policy, we're required to post a notice of, of the third reading and public hearing at least fifteen days prior to our, our meeting with all of the information we'll have for third reading. our meeting with all of the information we'll have for third reading. Really makes it difficult, I mean, it's a state law, too, that we have to do this. It really makes it kind of difficult to work that because of the legislature's ability to delay their, their work. And I understand it's very complicated, and they have a lot of issues to sort through. But we will bring, you know, a third reading to you guys on the 22nd, based on our, all the information we have available, you know, and hopefully, they will come to some resolution. Ideally, they would do that like the 8th through the 10th, and, you know, we can have a really good idea of where things are going to land.
And one other thing, can you also let the board know about SRTI-3? Because there's some, from our end, we've actually been delayed in terms of the information they've given us. I think y'all said it on a meeting, y'all may know more about it than we do. Can you kind of talk about how we're trying to look at SRTI-3 as part of our budget process as well?
Yeah, unfortunately, with the way SRTI-3 has been put out, you know, there's some hope initially that we might be able to kind of piggyback some of the timing of those funds with our, you know, budget process. But that, you know, the amount of money wasn't announced until, I guess, about a week, week and a half ago. And there's still really not a lot of clear guidance out. In fact, we have a meeting middle of next week for CFOs to meet with the State Department and others to talk through. There's some guidance that has been released about some, you know, percentages of money has to be spent for certain things, but we don't have a whole lot of detail. There's a requirement about, you know, developing a plan and providing an opportunity for input on the plan, and, but there's no detail about how that's supposed to look. And so it's going to kind of be a fast and furious process over the next few weeks once they start releasing some of that information. And then we, you know, can get together and sort out what that, what that looks like. In our district, it's, you know, about $27 million is our allocation roughly. And so, you know, we anticipate similar spending criteria to the previous allotments. And with that stipulation, that certain portions of that money have to be used for, you know, certain things. So we'll certainly be bringing you more information, but we, the timing of it is not going to coincide such that, you know, you might consider, you know, adding some additional FTE and know that by June 22nd. I don't think that's really feasible, but, you know, we'll see. We may be able to work something like that out. But again, that may be not something you want to consider doing, as we talked about early on in those conversations, creating that funding cliff, because after three years, that money's going to not be there to support that FTE, and so it makes it really difficult for anyone.
Well, you know, I mean, you know, when you plan your family budget, you plan it based on the resources you know you have, not that bonus you think you're going to get, or that extra check that grandma's going to send, or whatever.
Right.
So I think that it's very important that our budget is based on what we know, and really, at this point in time, what we can control.
That's right.
And let the SRTI Fund kind of work its way through whatever the system is that they're coming up with.
And I think, too, the real danger with this, you know, it's hard to envision danger with more money coming, but the real danger with this is that, for the longest time, we've now said, "We need more money, we need more money, we need more money," as a school district, or just as a state. And now, all of a sudden, we will get this funding, but the funding is constrained based off the rules in which it's given. And so you can't go, you know, well, you could. You could, you could go rogue, and you could hire all the teachers and do all the things that you would want to do, but in three years, you're going to have some very difficult conversations. And so that money is, at least in my understanding, is very constrained. And so it's, while it is additional funds, it's not additional funds that would necessarily be used in the way that, say, increased student-based costs would. And so hopefully legislators don't come back and say, "Well, you know, we gave you all this money, but we didn't see enough improvement." Well, that's not true. You know, it's based off of the ability to use the money, how we determine that the students of Lexington One would need it.
Right.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So obviously, the board has the authority to, through the budget process, to levy mills to support the budget. You recall that due to Act 388, these mills, the millage levy is only on business and 6%, you know, 10% manufacturing. It is not on owner-occupied housing, and so the 4% house that, you know, most folks are familiar with, you don't pay anything for school operations. So these mills that we're talking about right now would not affect those individuals. There's a calculation that's done each year. We have the calculation now, it was released, it's based on the CPI, Consumer Price Index. So we can actually go up, we had anticipated in first reading about 11 mills. I'll give Deborah credit, she about hit it on the head, 11.03, we'll let that slide a little bit. So she's really, really good at this stuff. But the actual calculation is 11.03 mills that we could go up. Act 388 also provides a look-back provision, if you recall, where you can, if you don't use the mills in a given year, you can look back for a number of years and recapture those mills and levy them. So actually, we can levy 37.85 mills of look-back, because the last time we levied any millage was in 2018, and that was a 4.45. But you see, the last two years, we haven't increased millage at all, and this year, we're proposing not to do that as well. And so, you know, but you could do that if you chose to do that, so just wanted to point that out.
And I would add, if the legislature funded us at the base student cost for our current student enrollment, which again, was part of the promise of the penny sales tax statewide for public education, then we could actually lower mills by 41 mills to our community and our business. And I would argue that Lexington County generates a lot of sales tax revenue. So it's unfortunate that the legislature isn't funding us at the base student cost so we could lower mills on our community.
Right. Just to show you what the calculation would look like, the millage rate that we levy is the 308.86, and the value of a mill, the most recent value from the county is 312,651. And so if you levied the 11.03, it would generate about $3.4 million. But, you know, again, we're not recommending any millage levy at this point in second reading. So, you know, with that, I'll be happy to answer any other questions that you have, or flip back to some charts that you want to refer to if you need to for discussion.
I know you and I, Mr. Salters, have had a lot of conversations this week through email with a lot of questions that you answered, and I appreciate that. So I don't have really any questions tonight. But during the first reading, I was recovering from a root canal, so I didn't get to say thank you to our finance team. I appreciate everything y'all have done. And also, more than anything, I appreciate the opportunity to have a meeting where we discussed our priorities, and to see those actually in the budget, line item by line item. So I just wanted to thank all of y'all for that.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
I'd be curious to hear from SLT, just as you look at this budget, your thoughts.
Who wants to go first?
So I think it was back in March or April, I don't remember exactly when, that we talked about, I think Ms. Green wrapped up our priorities in our budget moving forward to be heavily laden with social and emotional learning. And I think a lot of our ideas and thoughts and requests in our budget for the upcoming year supports that. I think that is, it's always been important, and COVID has certainly amplified and highlighted that. I will also say that I'm hopeful that we'll be able to increase our supervision of our nurses through the nursing coordinator. That is a long-needed addition. Again, it's not, it's not just COVID-related, there's lots of things that happened pre-COVID and what happened post-COVID that taxes the clinical side of nursing, because nursing is in this odd place where it's both administrative and clinical. And having one person supervise over 50 nurses and all of the myriad things that they have to do and have to perform every day, I think it's a much-needed addition, and it's no hit to the budget at all. So that's promising. So I think from our customer service perspective and our social and emotional support system, I think we're moving in the right direction from a student services perspective to meeting those goals and objectives.
I would just add to what Mr. Collyell has already said. I'm real pleased with, in this budget, that we have, our North Star has been our strategic plan. Those of you who are in organizations or run businesses, you know that you want to be better next year than you were the past year. And that's what we've striven to do in this budget. Mr. Salters and his staff have worked really hard on this budget. I'm especially pleased that we've taken care of our people, all of our people. The word equity was used this year by one of our, tonight, by one of our citizens. And this is an equitable budget. We have addressed an increase in salary for everyone in the district who works here, and I'm real pleased about that. You know, the bulk of our budget is in people, and we're a good school district because of the people that we recruit and hire and retain. And so I really appreciate the board's support on that, but I'm satisfied. This is a very good budget after a very challenging year.
I would agree that, I mean, I think the win in this budget, bar none, is to try to have those low-target class sizes. I think it's a win for our teachers, I think it's a win for our students, even more so. When we talk about learning loss and trying to recoup learning loss, the best way you can do that is to get the class sizes down to where it can be more individualized. I realize that we would love to have it even more lower than it is now, but then the things that impact that are space. And so if you're going to have more, lower class sizes and more teachers, you've got to have a place to put them. And then you've got to have, you've got to be able to find those teachers at the same time. So even if we could find the teachers, in some cases, it'd be really difficult to place them somewhere. And so I do think this is really an intentional budget that really is going to have a big impact on our kids and our teachers' well-being. So, I mean, I can't say that enough. I just really think that's one of the biggest wins we have in the whole thing.
Thank you. And Dr. Tally, you know, your sage advice will certainly be missed. You hit on a very important part about being better next year than you were this year. You know, you're exactly right, in business, you want to be the best. And just like the school district, we want to be the best school district when we look at our surrounding school districts, and nothing against them, we just want to be the best. But once you become the best, you come to realize that the competition is really against yourself at the end of it. It's called an infinite game. And so the infinite game is that, can Lexington One be better every year, better every year? And so I think that's very sage advice about this budget, so thank you.
I wanted to mention that, you know, Lexington One is considered a leader in so many ways. But after our first reading, I actually received contact from several chairs of boards in the area, neighboring districts, wanting a copy of the presentation of our first reading, and, you know, how, you know, how are you doing this, and what, you know, because even on our budget, other districts pay attention, we're a trendsetter, trailblazer on things. And, I mean, and I'm so excited because the first reading was great, but the second reading, I mean, really, you've upped the ante on this. And I'm just incredibly pleased, like Dr. Tally said, that we're taking care of our people, because this district is phenomenal, because the best people work here. And day in and day out, in spite of all the curveballs that get thrown at them every day, they're here and they're, you know, loving on kids and teaching kids and mentoring kids, and that's our mission, is children. And so I think that anything we can do to take care of the people that are in the buildings every day, taking care of our children, that if we're taking care of those people, then we're doing our jobs. So thank you very much for this. Board, is there any other discussion?
I don't mean to belabor the point that Mike made, but just again, the biggest impact to me as a retired educator and principal is student-teacher ratios. And I think if you talk to any teacher, any principal, they say, "What's the biggest thing we could do to impact student achievement?" It would be student-teacher ratios. I mean, if you ask Horace Mann, I think he would, he would probably say that. So thank you for doing that. That's, to me, the most exciting thing in this budget. There's a lot of good things, too, but that's the biggest impact that we can have. So thank y'all for designing that, and let's keep it in there.
Madam Chair, I'll just take a second to thank our finance team. We have the best finance team in the country, I mean, hands down. And they do a lot of work to help support the needs of our schools and to put this together. And they tolerate my crazy ideas, and, "Hey, why don't we try to look at this, or what should we do this, you know, let's think about it this way." And so I really appreciate their support and coming together and always finding a way to make things work and doing it with integrity and confidence in our staff. So thank you.
Thank you.[1793.35][1793.35]